So, good evening, everyone. We're gonna have some competition running the meeting tonight. I'm hearing little babies say. So, welcome, welcome. It is so wonderful to have a full house and to have you all here tonight. So, the October 22nd, 2025 council meeting and the Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rassus?
Here.
Mr. Vera?
I'm here.
Mrs. Wittes is absent. Mr. Dangler is absent. Doctor vote?
Here.
Please all stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will now read a mission statement for the city council. The Long Branch mayor, city council, and administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect that values the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Certification, please.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act and posted as required by law.
Okay, thank you. So, we have two presentations tonight. And the first one is gonna be the Italian-American Heritage Month presentation by our Long Branch Public Schools. And who is gonna be stepping up for that? Good, welcome. And tell us your name when you get up there. There you go.
Hi, my name's Francesca.
And just hold that. Can you get that microphone a little bit closer? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Francesca Machala. I'm an eighth grader at the Long Branch Middle School. I would like to thank Mayor Pallone and the Long Branch City Council for giving me the opportunity to speak about what Italian heritage means to me. For me, Italian, for me, being Italian is about family, being full of passion, and of course, having a love of food. First, being Italian, being from an Italian family means that family is at the center of all that we do. We spend time together celebrating family traditions year after year and having big family celebrations on holidays like Christmas and Easter. We are always there to support each other at our sports competitions, school events, and other life milestones. But mostly, being in an Italian family is about our strong family connection, family pride, and love for each other that is a common trait in any Italian home. Next, being Italian means being full of passion. Italians are not shy to express their emotions and certainly put their heart and soul into everything they do. This passion is also part of our relationships with our family and friends. Although we may have our family debates at times, the conversations all serve as a way to express our strong convictions while at the same time respecting the family core values. Finally, being Italian means having a love for food. It is not just about the delicious Italian recipes served when we eat together, but the family meals are a true event. Whether it's our traditional Sunday dinners or spending holidays together, these meals bring our family together to create lasting memories. Thank you for allowing me the chance to share my thoughts on what it means to be part of a proud Italian family.
That was beautiful.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent job and wonderful heartfelt message for all of us. Nice job. And now, we will have another award. And I think business administrator will be stepping up to lead us through this award. And our mayor.
For anyone that doesn't know, my name's Charles Shirley. I'm the business administrator for the city and I'm currently the acting director of public safety. Chief Griffin's gonna lead you through the ceremony, but a part of this I didn't want to be left out is that everyone that lives here, you have to remember that we have a 300-plus lifeguard force that defends our oceans and people that go in it every single summer. The gap that no one knows about is when local summer happens, this is who we have. Our fire department is called from however far along that there's a swimmer in the ocean and he's drowning and figure it out, right? And so, this is why, when you're listening to what happened here, you need to understand there were no lifeguards on duty, there were no people there. So, if it weren't for civilians that acted and then the fire department that responded, the lifeguards aren't on duty. So, this what happened here was a little bit more than what it sounds like initially. So, just keep that in mind, time of year that happened. So, with that, Chief Griffin.
Thank you, Mayor Pallone. Thank you, Administrator Shirley, council. On September 18th, 2025, Fire Department was dispatched to the Cottage Avenue Beach for reported of multiple swimmers in distress. Upon arrival, firefighters Choffey, Nicholas, and firefighter Douglas Safiati entered the rough surf to initiate a rescue. Firefighters Choffey, with the assistance of firefighters Christopher Fazio, successfully removed one victim from the surf while firefighter Safiati swam out to a second victim. After reaching and providing a flotation device, the victim and firefighter Safiati became separated due to the rough surf. And both became caught in a rip current and were unable to get back without assistance. Firefighter Fazio and Captain Timothy Griffin entered the water to assist both rescuer and the second victim. Firefighter Fazio swam to the firefighter Safiati with a tethered rescue line, which allowed firefighter Bannock on shore to pull the members safely back to land. Once the firefighters were secured, Captain Griffin ensured their safety and then assisted the second victim from the water. As a result of this rescue operation, firefighter Safiati was transported to Monmouth Medical Center and eventually admitted for observation. The efforts by these men exemplify the energy, expertise, selflessness, and within the highest traditions of the fire service. For actions performed, these men will be awarded the following. Medal of Honor, Fowler First Class, firefighters Doug Safiati, number 183, and firefighter Nick Choffey, number 182. Medal of Honor, Fowler, Class Two, Captain Tim Griffin, firefighter Christopher Fazio. You'll have certificates as well. City of Long Branch Certificate of Recognition. The certificate is presented to...
Did I say the thing?
All right. For receiving the Medal of Honor recognition for your heroic act on September 18th, 2025, when you risked your life to save swimmers in distress, you preserved, under extremely hazardous conditions and normally faced imminent personal risk. Your actions are the highest example of the values of the Long Branch Fire Department that holds. The mayor and council of the city of Long Branch extend our congratulations for your exemplary service to our community. Nicholas Choffey. Timothy Griffin.
And with that, while these guys are here, I just wanna call the mayor up. There is a civilian award for someone that acted and actually helped assist the fireman and delay and help the swimmer until the fireman arrives. So, mayor, with that.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. And I, you know, I watched the video of this. I've been around the water all my life and I had never seen the rip currents like that. I mean, it was just so strong and just amazing what all the firemen did and thank you risking your life. Coincidentally, today is, what is the Go the Extra Mile Resolution that we're doing today? And it's just coincidental that October 23rd and we're celebrating the firemen and your effort as well as Mr. Moyle, who I'm just gonna mention right now. So, my understanding is that at the top of this story, Mr. Moyle's wife was walking on the boardwalk and noticed that there were two young men in distress in the water and that she immediately contacted her husband, who coincidentally was jogging on the boardwalk as well. And he literally went down, this was before the firefighters arrived, and went into the water. One young man had been able to get out of the water and then he went out to save the other young man. And fortunately, he got caught with everybody else. And then the firemen came to the rescue and fortunately were able to pull everybody out. But if you just think of an individual who's gonna jump in the water like that and risk his life to attempt to save a young man is pretty amazing as well. So, we have a certificate that I'd like to read. And Mr. Moyle, are you here if you could come up? Let me just read this. The City of Long Branch Certificate of Recognition. This certificate is presented to Solomon Moyle for receiving the civilian service award in recognition of your brave and selfless efforts on September 18th, 2025, to save swimmers in distress. You acted without hesitation at your own personal risk, prioritizing their well-being above your own. The mayor and council of the city of Long Branch extend our thanks to you for your courage, community spirit, and caring response in a dire situation. You're an inspiration to our community. Presented this 22nd day of October, 2025, John Pallone and council president. I need a vote, as well as the city council who are here today. So, thank you.
You guys want a photo or something? You wanna go up there and take a photo? Is the union photographer here? Get up there, put them all set.
How you doing, chief? Looking good, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great kids, great bunch of guys.
Yeah, they're awesome.
Yeah.
No, anytime I run into them, they're just so down to earth.
They're down to earth.
They're so appreciative.
What an inspiration for all of us. Okay, we will now continue with the meeting with the reading and approval of previous minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the October 8th, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rassus?
Yes.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes is absent. Mr. Dangler is absent. Doctor vote?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration, there are none. Ordinance for introduction, ordinance 0-13-25. This is the first reading of ordinance 13-25, an ordinance of the city of Long Branch, County of Monmouth, approving and adopting the 2025 update to the Oceanfront Broadway Redevelopment Plan and amending and supplementing Chapter 269 Redevelopment and Chapter 345 Zoning of the City of Long Branch Code. This is the summary of the ordinance. This ordinance is adopting the 2025 updated version of the Oceanfront Broadway Redevelopment Plan, which revises the prior redevelopment plans and the design handbooks for the local development sectors. Chapter 269 Redevelopment and Chapter 345 Zoning are amended to codify the changes set forth in the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan indicates that the handbooks regarding the development of Broadway Gateway, Handbook III, and Lower Broadway, Handbook VII, are fully superseded by the new plan. And where the updated redevelopment plan conflicts with the General Design Guidelines, Handbook I, and the Oceanfront Broadway Addendum, Handbook VIII, the provisions of the new redevelopment plan prevail. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set the public hearing for November 25th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rassus?
Yes.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes is absent. Mr. Dangler is absent. Doctor vote?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Ordinance 0-14-25. This is the first reading of ordinance 14-25, an ordinance of the city of Long Branch, amending Chapter 316, Towing, Section 316-5, Fees 316-7, License Fees, Term, Renewal, Annual Inspection Fee. A summary of this ordinance is that this ordinance amends the towing ordinance by updating the fee schedule and license fees for tow operators in the city of Long Branch. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise, and post according to law and set the public hearing for November 12th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rassus?
Yes.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes is absent. Mr. Dangler is absent. Doctor vote?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Public participation for resolutions and all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion part of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The public portion of the meeting is to allow you, the public, to state your comments directly to the administration and have a voice in the proceedings of your governing body. There will be no cross dialogue during the public portion part of the meeting. After you have spoken, any member of the dais authorized to speak on the part of the administration may address your comments, answer your questions, and correct any misleading or erroneous information. If there's anyone in the audience who has a comment to make, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Vincent Lapore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Since there's no cross dialogue in the public portion, I'm gonna ask a series of questions. At the conclusion, I would like council to answer those questions. First question concerns houses of worship. Is this city offering to purchase at market rate the house of worship on Atlantic Avenue that is for sale? And for what purpose is the city purchasing this house of worship for? The second question concerning a house of worship. The word is throughout Pier Village is that a house of worship is going to be built on the west side of Ocean Boulevard, on recently purchased properties between Ocean Boulevard and Second Avenue on Chelsea Avenue. I put an opere in for development proposals of any sort for those properties and all I received was minor changes on the property. The question is, is this city government courting a house of worship on Chelsea Avenue across from Pier Village? Yes or no? About the fire truck parked out front of City Hall, the Monmouth Beach Fire Truck, the ladder truck, since this city's ladder truck is no longer operable and the city is now using the Monmouth Beach Ladder Fire Truck, where is the measure or resolution of agreement describing the terms of the use of the Monmouth Beach Ladder Fire Truck and the reciprocating requirements or terms of Monmouth Beach? Councilman Rassus, on June 17th, you filed a single candidate committee certificate of organization with the state elect listing John Pallone as chairman. Councilman Rassus, on your report of contributions and expenditures filed October 3rd, 2025, you accepted into your campaign and listed a total of approximately $2,500 contribution cumulatively from the city attorney's law firm, Raynone, Cochrane, and Mincello. Each of the names just mentioned contributing $833.33. Councilman Rassus, on the October 8th bill payout, Resolution 192, you voted yes for the approval of a payment of $28,847.95 for legal services to the city's law firm, Raynone, Cochrane, Mincello. Councilman Rassus, in light of the recent record at council meetings of the city's attorney's incidences of mistakes, malpractice, pay-to-play questions, et cetera, do you have any concerns as far as your integrity and ethics in taking contributions from the city law firm, Cochrane, Mincello, Raynone, for your campaign, especially while you're voting yes for payments at council meetings to the city law firm? Yes or no? How much time is left, Madam Clerk?
A minute and 30 seconds.
Few meetings ago, I stated city policy had an impact on the Board of Education with the increase. City Attorney Raynone responded, "Any tax abatement doesn't reduce by one nickel the amount of money that the Board of Ed has for education." End quote. That's after I referred to the 30-year Pier Village tax abatement and other tax abatements in this city back to 2005. In a recent candidate's forum on September 16th...
One-minute notification.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. A candidate stated the following, quote, "I think as far as the big picture is concerned, we keep talking about taxes. I know the city tax has grown $4.6 billion in the last year with the city income going up $299 million. Meanwhile, the school is underfunded." Quote, he continues, "I don't know what the big misnomer is. I think the tax situation is more on the city than those on the school board or the school administration." End quote. That individual candidate got it half-right. The Board of Education failed on fighting the tax abatements, but the half-part of it they got correct was that the city policy has aggravated the increases in the Board of Education. Taxes on the people of this city because of the tax abatements. Counsel, I'll await the answers to my questions now.
Five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Lapore.
Well, where are the answers?
You can be seated.
I'd like the answers.
Well, we're still in the public portion, so you wanna...
Yeah. So, does any...
No, we're still in the public portion, so is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Okay.
Lapore can sit down and wait and get his answers when we're done with the public portion.
Okay. Anyone else?
My name is Anna Silva Mendez. I'm from 45 Jackson Street, Long Branch, New Jersey. So, I was just interested in knowing a little bit about whether, I don't know if you guys can disclose this information, but just about budgeting and maybe like the timelines about the construction along Broadway?
If you wanna stay after, I'll go over everything with you.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there anyone else?
Scott Beaver, 434 Long Branch Avenue. Just a couple things. Public safety issue. I know, Mr. Shirley, we talked about the streetlights back in February, I believe. And I believe that JC Penel is not making any progress. And there are some serious intersection issues, curve issues where they're not lighted and are truly becoming an issue for public safety from this point forward. If anyone, especially at intersections that aren't lit, gets hurt because of this, I ask and I would promote the individual being injured to go after the city of Long Branch and JC Penel for not fulfilling their obligation to having these lights lit. Another thing, and I've been thinking this a long, long time. I had a conversation up here, I don't know, six months ago, maybe less, and we were discussing why certain things aren't getting done, specifically with crimes or whatever. And Mr. Mayor, you said to me afterwards, "It's out of your hands." I really thought about that, and I think what you meant by "out of your hands" is because of our governor. With that, I have a problem because I know how much you support him. And I have a big problem with the 27 years that I gave to this city that crime is being overlooked or the no bail, the no cash bail, all that. It's a bunch of BS. It really is. You can try and cater to whoever you want, it's BS. And Ms. Voight, I remember another issue where you were talking about counselors going out on calls. Sounds great on paper, looks great on TV. It's not gonna work. Trust me. Do people are gonna go out, think they're going to help, and they're going to get in the way, or they're gonna get their ass beat by being in the way? You haven't seen it, I myself, Mr. Shirley, we have. And quite honestly, I don't know what's going to happen, but the fact that you can't do anything is very troublesome, very troublesome. And I just hope that this all gets taken care of sooner than later. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dr. Catherine Morris, 787 Ocean Avenue. And I'd like to echo what the gentleman said, that lighting, street lighting is an issue, a safety issue. I'm with some of my friends here who have repeatedly contacted JC Penel, so have I, and reached out to city government about lights that are out. And it seems to, doesn't seem to go anywhere. So I'd really like some insight and understanding as to what we can reasonably expect, where's the logjam, if there is something, and maybe you'll shed some light on it for us. Thank you.
If you stay after, we'll talk to you.
Anyone else? Okay, do you want to do the answers?
You close the public portion?
No, that's what I'm saying, I'll close at first. Yeah, okay. After the public, anyone from the public who wants to further discuss any other comments or concerns, please call the city clerk's office at 732-571-5686 to schedule a time at the public council hours that are held the first Wednesday of every month. And now I'd like to see if anyone in the dais wants to respond to any of the questions.
If I can, Council President, a couple of things. First, the city doesn't comment on contract negotiations when we're negotiating to purchase property, so I would comment on that to begin with. Secondly, as to an application on Chelsea Avenue, the city certainly isn't quote-unquote encouraging any application. As to the Monmouth Beach Fire Truck, there's, I believe, an exchange of correspondence with Monmouth Beach, but the use of the fire truck arises out of a, you know, fairly well-established mutual aid obligations between the various towns that help each other out in circumstances like this where there's a truck down and so, but there is an exchange of correspondence, it's not a formal agreement. As to my law firm's contribution, I'll just correct Mr. Lapore in this way. Speaker Cochrane's name is Cochrane, not Coglan, so you keep mispronouncing it, I just want to make sure you understand that. And secondly, just like you have a First Amendment right to come up here and say, anything that you want to say, most of it is lies and untrue, I have a First Amendment right to make campaign contributions to support candidates that I like, so I do that all the time. By the way, I support Democratic candidates all across the state and I'm very proud of it. And finally, with the, I'm not sure where your numbers came from, but I'm not sure, I've never heard numbers of, the city's income's gone up $4 billion and the budget's gone up 279 million. I think the city's budget is something like 70... $80 million. I don't know where 4 billion came from, it doesn't make any sense to me. Then again, nothing you say about tax abatements make any sense to me, but I'm going to say it again. The school board strikes their budget, the city strikes the tax rate, which we're required to do by law, we don't control the school budget, tax abatements don't affect one nickel money that the school board gets, they raise their budget, they send the city a bill and it gets paid quarterly. So that, I think that answers all of the questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone...
So I'm going to answer that question too. There's no conflict of interest, and you know there's no conflict of interest. Well, you don't get to answer individual questions, you ask questions, we answered your questions. Your fact was that there were, the city's income went up 4 billion, that's a fact?
Mr. Lapore... You, Mr. Lapore, please be quiet now. Any more...
I do, so I mean, I don't, Ms. Mendez, I don't want to skip you, but it's a longer conversation, so stay, but I would like to talk about JC Penel. Is Scott still here? So, so just so you know, when we get a report, everything is documented on the computers. JC Penel does not report to any governing body, they report to the BPU. And believe me, complaints have gone up and down the chain, I can tell you, up and down Ocean Avenue, up and down Cedar Avenue, we've had issues in front of churches, synagogues, runners in the morning, but you know, Scott knows better than anyone, my traffic unit will go out and actually do a inventory of every light that's out. At one, we were at 350 lights out, and we pay whether they're on or off, it doesn't matter. So believe me, it's something we're fighting as much as you. At one point Congressman Pallone even got involved and went to First Energy in Ohio and got someone to come down here and talk to us, and we got some of them fixed, but basically they gave us answers like during COVID, the plant that made the lights that we need shut down and they can't source them anymore, all the way to that BPU just approved a huge project and they're converting them to LED lights and it's a whole different process. So we are constantly reporting them, everything we do is in writing, it's done on the computer, we get reports back, and they, the timeline just keeps going out and out. We were told by someone from JC Penel that the lead time to complete our list is three years. That's what we were given. And we didn't accept it, we keep fighting it, we keep reporting them, we have, the police officers doing the same job three times, just so it's documented that many times. So we are doing everything we can.
And JC Penel was acquired by First Energy, which is out in Ohio, so I mean, some of the connections that we used to have locally with JC Penel, you can imagine that First Energy, which is a nationwide company in Ohio, is going to be less concerned with the smaller communities in New Jersey. You mentioned my brother, again, you know, he's on the energy committee, so they generally respond to him, and as Mr. Shirley said, occasionally they will send somebody down from the corporate office, but it's just been, it's just a constant struggle with them.
And Scott, I just wanted to add, I, you know, respect your opinion, and I think it's the Arrive Together, I think is the name of the program that you were referring to with a social worker and the police working, working together. You know, you know things firsthand, so I respect learning from your experience, so thank you. Pardon me? Yeah, yeah. Okay, I need a, now I will ask Madam Clerk if there are any changes to the list of resolutions.
No changes have been made, I just need a motion to close the public.
No, that was done already.
Okay.
Yes.
So we can take the listed resolutions as consent agenda, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rassus?
Yes.
Mr. Vera?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes is absent, Mr. Dangler is absent, Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Applications, there are none, and so we'll move to Ms. Laney's business for the good of the order, and we will ask Councilman Rassus to start us off.
Thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to thank Francesca for a beautiful presentation commemorating Italian Heritage Month. Also would like to express many thanks to Mr. Moyle and the firefighters for risking their lives to help the swimmers that treacherous day on September 18th. In two weeks is Election Day, just want to mention to everybody, it's your civic duty, get out and vote, every vote counts. And on that note, just want to wish everyone a nice evening and stay safe.
Thank you, Councilman Rassus. Councilman Vera?
Good evening, thanks for coming out. I'll act a little bit with Francesca, did a great job, presentation, Italian-American heritage. And for our firemen that risk their lives every night, beautiful job, and thanks for all they do, because they do a lot for us. And for Salome Moyle, a civilian, inspiration is right for him, he worked a great job, an inspiration inspired the city. And I want to thank you for coming out for your concerns, I know we're on top of it, we're, business administrators on it with the JC Penel lights, and we're on it, we're trying to do our best that we can. With that, I want to say goodnight and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Councilman Vera, and Mayor Pallone.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to mention that tonight the city council adopted a resolution that opposes RWJ Barnabas' plan to relocate its hospital from Monmouth Medical Center in Long Branch to a new facility in Titten Falls. So let's be clear about what that means. If this move is approved by the New Jersey Department of Health, the license will be transferred to Titten Falls and Monmouth Medical Center in Long Branch will no longer be a hospital. Yes, it might retain some satellite services, but it will be a mere shell of the institution that has served our community for more than 135 years. Key services that would be removed include the labor and delivery, pediatrics, life-saving cardiac care, major surgery, intensive and critical care, and rapid access to stroke treatment. Last week, Hackensack Meridian Health issued a statement, and I quote, "Replacing a full-service acute care hospital with a satellite clinic is a drastic reduction of care," unquote. The Hackensack Meridian statement continues, quote, "This move effectively abandons Long Branch's most vulnerable residents, a community with limited access to transportation that relies on its local hospital. So need our hospital to stay in Long Branch. Please make your voice heard at the public hearing, which is next Wednesday, October 29th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Ocean Place Resort and Hilton, I'm sorry, Ocean Place Resort and Hotel, that's at One Ocean Boulevard in Long Branch. Free parking will be available at the hotel or at our municipal parking lot across the street on the corner of Broadway and Ocean Boulevard, so thank you for that." And I just want to mention a couple of upcoming events that we have here in the city. Tomorrow, Thursday, October 23rd, is an evening of celebrating Italian heritage at the Long Branch Arts Center and Cultural Center. This event starts at 6:00 and includes live music, Italian food and a talk on Italian heritage. Join us for this free event. This Saturday, October 25th, is Halloween at Jackson Woods and also at the Long Branch Fire Museum. This event is from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. and will include costumes, refreshments, activities and fun for all ages. We typically get on a nice day about 1,000 people who show up at Jackson Woods. And the entire park is decorated, so it's a really nice, family-friendly environment. And next week, on October 29th, I'm sorry, October 28th, Tales from Long Branch's Haunted Mansion, for those of you who remember the Haunted Mansion that used to be on the pier, join us for a Hollywood reunion, Hollywood, Halloween reunion at the old haunted mansion, of the old haunted mansion, on October 28th at 6:00 p.m. at the Long Branch Senior Center. This is a free event and open to the public. It's going to be a very, a very cool evening. And finally, again, I want to thank our firefighters and Mr. Moyle for literally putting their lives on the line today, but I also want to thank them for, last night, firefighters from the FMBA cooked a delicious meal for our seniors at the senior center. So I want to say thank you for your time and your generosity and for bringing our community together. Thank you all for being here this evening and for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor Pallone. And I just will make some final comments and really second to everything that people have said. We are so grateful for our firefighters and the bravery that they show and for Mr. Moyle, his bravery and sacrifice to risk his life to go in and save, save someone who he probably didn't even know, is really an inspiration for all of us. I want to thank Francesca for that beautiful message from the Italian heritage, partially Italian, and everything that she said in terms of family and the meals and the togetherness, celebrating the holidays and the long Sunday dinners that go for three hours, that was part of my upbringing and it was so refreshing to hear her talk about heritage that we share. With that, with Halloween coming and with a lot of good events coming our way and some very important things for us to think about, as the mayor said, the public hearing that's happening regarding the hospital, it's an important event, so if you could consider going to that. And with that, we hope to see you again in two weeks. Stay safe and enjoy. Thank you. I'm going to now close the meeting with, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.